Called to order, this is Monday, July 31st, 2017, it's 4:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. I would just like to remind everybody again, this is a work session, this isn't a council meeting, so if discussion is desired from you, we will call on you, otherwise, if you want to have a separate discussion, we're going to ask that you do. See your way out, we appreciate that. But, I'm sure I didn't have to say that, we've got such a respectable group out there, but I just wanted to throw that anyways. We're going to roll right downhill tonight, we have some mayor's awards that will be given out. Thank you. Come on, man, come on, help me out, help me out. We're going to do a discussion item first. We've got some people here from Otter Island, so we'll go ahead and address that first, then we're going to roll downhill. So, who's presenting that? Jim, or Eric?
This came, came back as a result of your comments that you had last week that received from residents from Otter Island, expressing some concerns about the significant increases on the lease amounts over the course of the next three years. As you may remember, the council approved those increases after, or during the backside of the budget presentation this last year. That was really following a presentation from the Riverfront Commission in regards to making some alterations to the lease that we have, both in terms of trying to be a little more aggressive in how we make sure that there aren't problem properties on the island, as well as what the amount of the rentals were. Staff hadn't, didn't, this wasn't something that was a staff issue, but it was from a Riverfront Commission specifically. And the council did agree to move forward on those. Those new rates went into effect for leases for July 1st this year, moving forward over the next several years. With the amount of people expressing opinions on, or concerns about the increases, primarily from people who are current leaseholders out on Otter Island, this has been brought back at the request of some of you on council, just to see if you had a desire to see some changes made as we move into the future.
Thank you, my friend, appreciate that. I did speak with some representatives that were going to be here tonight, and they were going to pick out a couple of spokesmen. So, are those couple of spokesmen here tonight that had anything they want to? Mr. Walsh? Come on down. The lovely lady next to you went like this, she went.
Charlie Walsh, 1619, River Burlington, Chairman of the Riverfront Advisory. I didn't know we got a commission, now, so I take that as a compliment. You did get minutes in February on our meeting. I do want to tell you that the meeting was not quorum, and it did get voted on, but it shouldn't have been voted on, because there wasn't enough people there. I was not there. They did talk about it, they made a recommendation to you, and I think the recommendation that they made was not quite the same as what you made. So, some of you were on the riverboat that we went up, what, two years ago? Or last year? Can't really remember which year. The recommendation was that some of the cabins are in totally bad shape, and we felt that there should be some inspection by the city to improve it. And, I believe we talked to staff about that, and they stated that there wasn't really a law in the book to be able to do anything with the recommendation of, if it was over 50% torn down, or something, that you could do anything about it. So, that was kind of dropped, but after listening to some of the people at the public meeting, what, two weeks ago, or something like that, we had another meeting, and we felt that maybe they were a little bit too high. Last year, the ice really did some major damages to properties up there. And, we, it wasn't a unanimous decision on the Riverfront Advisory that we would recommend that you take another look and lower, but that was our last meeting that we had. Do you have any questions for me, or from other members?
So, are you suggesting then, right now it's set at?
Seventy-five per.
Goes from 250 to 325, or is the committee suggesting we stay there, or not do it?
Just, maybe take a $25 increase at this time, but nothing like the 75. We felt that it's still a bargain, even at 325.
So, okay.
But, right now, after all the damage that was done last year, maybe it wasn't here to do it, at all.
So, then what about the out-years, the next two years that it was set to increase, or?
Just look at that next year, yeah.
Just do one year at a time?
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Matt, did you have something?
Yeah, Matt Rieker, 912 Hagman.
No, you're good, man.
Charlie and I sit on the Riverfront Advisory Committee together, and I guess the financial amount.
Did you give your name and address, sorry?
Yeah, Matt Rieker, 912 Hagman. The financial amount is irrelevant. The whole purpose of this was to try and encourage people to have more commitment to their lot, to clean up the lots. If you're going to make a $25 million commitment to the Riverfront, that island's part of that Riverfront, so, as far as I'm concerned, we could have no fees. But, this council's got to figure out what they're going to do to get that island cleaned up. So, really, that's, that's the biggest issue we've got. If you guys have got better ideas on how to get that done, then that's fine. If we've got to raise the price to $5,000 in order to get people to have more commitment, then that's what we've got to do. But, the amount isn't what we're really arguing about, so.
Okay.
The goal of our committee was to come up with a plan, to advise you guys to figure out how to go about cleaning up that island. That was one of the tools that we saw. You guys have got other ideas, and that'd be the best.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Thanks, man. Counsel?
Well, see, Paul Vorwerk has done a lot of work, there's some series of pictures over here, every lot, from, two pictures, one at low river stage, and the other one at the, at the higher river stages. So, I want to compliment Paul and his wife on all that work they did there, to provide that for us.
I believe that we did give you photos of the last Riverfront, too, that we had.
Right.
Again, this is a work session, so obviously we can't put anything in, or decide on anything, or vote on anything, obviously, but I just want to say that I spoke with some people that are, many of the river rats, and people that spend a lot of time in the river, and have cabins down there, and after, after the conversation I had, their concern was, one, when it comes to future increases, that we don't put it on a consent agenda, and I'll leave that, because I could have easily not had that done. The reason why I didn't see any issue with it personally was because nobody said anything about it, you know, we didn't see, we didn't hear anything. Well, sometimes people do misreading the paper, people have active lives, so I can understand and respect that. As far as I'm concerned, I do think a increase is due. The amount of increase that I was satisfied with was a $25 increase, and to revisit this next year, that'd give everybody a chance to kind of get their thoughts together, and maybe we can get a better plan by the time we revisit this next year, on how we're going to keep those islands in good shape, not just for now, but for the future, so. I'm just throwing that out there. Counsel? Anybody else? Have you thought?
I think what we have already done, what's already, you know, started happening, I think is fine. I don't, I don't think that's too much to ask with the increase. I think it really does show how much somebody really cares about their property, and I think that's going to be the best way, evidently it's going to be the best way we have of cleaning up that island, because what are their options? Can we go in and do inspections, and say, "Clean this up in 30 days," or "We're tearing it down"? But, we can't, correct?
I hadn't heard, actually, yet, the complaint, and I don't know, maybe I'm misreading what was done, there are some lease terms that were modified to allow for inspection process, and a process for getting, having cleanup occurred as a part of that rental agreement. I haven't heard that being what the complaint has been about.
Right, I wasn't given any.
It's the amount of the fee increase, which you could make an adjustment on without impacting whether we have the ability to have the other items included or not.
So, that's part of the lease agreement, inspections were allowed?
I think it's, I like it the way it is, the way it's been agreed upon.
Okay, again, the only thing I was getting was on the increase.
I have to agree with the mayor and the Riverfront Advisory Chair, that we look at a $25 increase for this year, we take another look at it next year, and decide with more input how we're going to take care of the dilapidated buildings that are out there now, as per the request of the advisory board, and how we're going to ensure that in the future, we don't get stuck with having to take care of more of them, and if it takes a modification of the lease, or increase in funding. I think the one thing that's important for me is, it's been mentioned a couple of times that we've had copies of the Riverfront Advisory Committee minutes, I haven't seen any for over a year, and I don't know if I'm just missing them, or if they're, or if they're somewhere on, that I need to look them up, rather than have them put in the reader file, or sent to us, so.
I can get you a copy of those.
Pardon me?
I can get you a copy of this, I have that one.
I didn't hear what you said.
She can get you a copy of those.
Okay.
They do get submitted, they, I know.
All right. So, maybe if we had those, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have gone as far as we did. The, I mean, I've been out there several times, and I've been on, I've been on the sandbar, and I've been on tours over the years with the Riverfront Advisory Committee, so it's not like I don't know what's going on out there, or what I've seen, so. If the, a couple more of the council members would support that, I would recommend that we put it, that we modify that lease at the next council meeting to, for the $25 increase for next year, and then we take another look at it, council take another look at it earlier in the year, and invite the interested parties in to discuss it, and there may be some very good ideas from the people that have the leases out there on how to, how to control it. The only other thing I have to say is, I was told by a party that there was a, one of the leasing's has, walks around with a gun on his hip, and two large dogs, and has told some of the people on the sandbar that they're on private property, and that they have to leave. And, that's pretty disturbing, in fact, that we don't have any jurisdiction out there for, for police officers, and it's a very long response on the part of the Des Moines County Sheriff's Department, so.
That has, there have been multiple complaints about that, the beach is, the lots are rented for the specific lot, so anyone who has a lot has the right to their piece of property. It's hard to see where property lines are down there, but the beach on the south end of the, is public land available to anyone as well, I mean, as, anyone has as much right to it as the folks who are leasing the specific lot on the site. In terms of our police department, you do provide service out there in an arrangement with Des Moines County?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and dress up what we do with that?
Yeah, we work closely with the Sheriff's Department, of course, with their rescue boat, and we have the rescue boat that's housed at the fire department, but we do not actively send an officer up there to patrol that island at any given point in time, it's basically a response to that island for any emergencies, or if someone was to call and say something is happening up there, we would launch the boat, our boat, which would be occupied by police officers that are, that are, I guess, certified to operate the boat, and head up to Otter Island to resolve whatever issue was there. And the response time would be timely, because we'd have to get the boat from the fire department, launch it, and then head up there, so there'd be some time involved, you're exactly right.
Right, thanks, Mayor.
You bet.
So, basically, what we're suggesting is to modify the lease agreement by eliminating the two out-years, and pick either, as you're suggesting, 25, or I wouldn't be bothered by leaving it at 75 like it is, but, for the next year, but, at least eliminating the two out-years.
Right. I agree with that.
Okay.
I think we have a consensus, basically?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess there is a consensus to that, too.
Okay.
We can bring it back with a resolution modifying the term to the one-year lease, or fee increase, and I think that we may leave, put in there with the $25 increase over last year's fee as a starting point, based off of the conversation, but recognizing that that is not necessarily where you may be. It may be that you want it to stay at the 325, but until you get to that vote point, I have no idea, and you can modify to any other figure in between.
Yeah.
That works. That's fine.
Okay, awesome.
As long as the two out-years are eliminated.
Right, okay. Anybody?
Well, it'll be set up to where the two out-years would stay at that same fee structure, that if you do 275, it would be that, for the out-year, absent a change from you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that accomplishes. One more thing, yes, yes, sir.
Just clarify something, that the Riverfront Advisory Committee did not have the lease prior to you approving it, we got it afterwards, so it was already written, so there wasn't a whole lot we could do about it.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you guys for coming down. If you guys want to get on out of here, you're certainly welcome in Iowa. Okay, we're going to move downhill now.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Lizzy, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Otter Islanders.
I figured there'd be more joy on faces leaving, all right, let's see if we can do that. Number two, we have a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1309 South 10th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, Mr. Tisland?
A map here, some property, this is one we acquired some time ago, it's something the school district had expressed interest in quite a while ago as well, through their Building Trades Program, looking to acquire a property from the city, and work with their students through their Building Trades Program. Finally, we're able to arrange for the superintendent to get through the property, and they did express interest in acquiring it for that program. So, this does have a public hearing, but the conditions of the sale would be the property at 1309 South 10th shall be transferred to the Burlington Community School District for the purpose of educating school students in building trades. Property at 1309 South 10th is being gifted to the above public purpose as allowed by Iowa Code 364.73. We had a discussion on this and some other programs, well, how long ago that was, number of months ago, trying to rehab properties and get them in the hands of owner-occupied, trying to improve neighborhoods, income-qualified individuals, working with various community groups to accomplish that, and this is one mechanism to doing that.
Counsel?
This is awesome.
Yeah.
We definitely need, in this area, need these tradespeople desperately.
You winded that up. Okay.
So, who becomes the owner of this house after?
School district becomes the owner, they'll work with their Building Trades Program to rehab it, and then they.
And then, when they're done with it, you're going to transfer it to?
We're transferring it to the school, and then they're.
Then it's up to them.
It's up to them, they've talked about the potential for someone, a veteran, who's in a position where they don't have the ability to make payments on it in a typical structure, or a single parent. They've talked about a few different options for that, I'm not exactly sure where they'll end up on it, but that's been part, I think, and I think it's still a work in progress in where they'll ultimately end up being.
Somewhat similar, but a little different, when we sold the home to Regional Planning Commission, they're fixing it up, and they're selling it on their own to an income-qualified individual, that we transfer it to them, they do the rehab, and they own it and sell it.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
We good? Number three, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Oak Street right-of-way located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This again was Oak Street right-of-way located just west of, or east of Bluff Road. Request from the property owners adjacent Burlington Truck Rail to vacate this, based on access to the site, it is a steep grade there, and doing rail improvements, they desired to have the access on the north side of 922, and provide an easement back to the city for access for the Burlington Municipal Waterworks Storage Facility and pump there. We did have the legal description for the vacation, that did include the area further back, and also into Oak Street, the surveyors just provided the legal description for the actual transfer, so the vacation area will be larger than the actual transfer, and so in your packet, there is an area to amend the legal, or Exhibit B, by adding the vacated portion legal description to that as well, so that vacated portion is not as large as, or the vacated portion is larger than the area being transferred. There are a couple of following items that Nick can talk about as well, but again, this is being transferred to Burlington Truck Rail, they're providing an alternative easement for access to the city and Waterworks on the north side of the vacated right-of-way, and then working with the city on a caution agreement relative to improvements at the agency railroad crossing.
Is that, that the price for the vacation is that they contribute, so there's, that's why there's no price listed there?
Yeah, and Nick can talk about that, those are the following two items.
We're getting into item four and five now. Four is the actual, sorry, I don't mean to try and run the meeting for you, item four is the agreement with Burlington Truck Rail, which item one discusses 53,500, which is half the price of the agency street crossing, that would be the price for the vacation of Oak Street. And then I have a map here showing, unfortunately, this item didn't make it to your agenda, it's still with our, with our attorney, discussing the legal description of the easements that will be granted from Burlington Truck Rail, not only just for the City of Burlington, but for Waterworks. I'll get that to Eric here. The image kind of doesn't really depict on what's really going on as far as the, kind of the rays, so we'll have two easements that come along with this agreement, one east to west across the property, and then one kind of in an angled fashion, in where there's that throated area, there's actually slag through there, and that's the easiest route to get there. There's kind of a raised hill along what is city property, and then you see this chunk down here at the bottom, and that's part of what Eric is talking about, that, all that will be vacated, but retained by the city, the other stuff will be conveyed to Burlington Truck Rail. So, the agreement has all those exhibits in there, that is, one, the cost share on agency, but then also the easements, and then there's some conveyance exhibit two, so. And actually, item five is Exhibit D, but has to be approved separately as an easement agreement, which is these two easements. So, hopefully that makes all sense, but they're all tied together.
Appreciate you covering that. Anybody got any questions for Nick? Jim?
No, I just would say the railroad has been very good to work with, as we've gone through this process. Them being willing to pay a portion of the costs on the agency street project, they're, they don't have a requirement, this is our project, but we were able to do something for them as well, that helps to clean, clean up some of their concerns, and still maintain our need to be able to allow the, make sure that the water department can get back and do the things they need to do. So, it's, it's been a good partnership, and we just, what the Shoreline has done for us on this is, we're pretty happy with, and I hope they are, too.
It's good to hear that we're working good with the railroad, so, it's always good.
So, the Shoreline.
Clarify, are we, what do you think, should counsel waive that second reading, and, or no?
I don't see any reason.
I don't see any reason, why not?
Yeah, I'd do it.
Because four and five get approval right off the bat, right, so, yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Jim? Number six, resolution approving the final plat of Kofefi Lot Subdivision. Mr. Tisland?
Two Lot subdivision.
Please tell us about Kofefi.
Kofefi Lot subdivision, or however it's pronounced, Two Lots, south of West Avenue, the former property there, 2803 West Avenue, formerly had the large house and garage, as seen on the south.
Oh, yeah.
Image there, that was torn down this summer, so they're subdividing that into two buildable lots, it is a very large lot right now, nearly two acres in size, so they plan to subdivide it in two separate lots, one 1.16 acres, and one 0.84 acre, so still very large lots, hopefully see new construction on those lots afterwards.
You guys good?
Glad to see it.
Yeah, me too.
Kofefi.
So are the neighbors.
Yeah, no doubt. All right, number seven, resolution approving an agreement with Howard R. Green Company for the sewer master plan.
Mr. Don?
You coming up to do that?
Yep.
Oh.
Good evening. Bob Wright, the City Engineering Manager. So, put some slides together for you. Go ahead to the next, there you go. So, again, the problem statement here really is that we have the current infrastructure for all of our sewer, we have GIS mapping showing locations, but we don't have definite details on, on the constraints, what the capacities are, so when we get into new developments out on, with the map there, out to the west with Flint Ridge, or to the south around the airport, we really don't have the means of discussing what our capabilities are, what new infrastructure is needed, and so going from there, it's, it's just identifying for the Hawkeye Basin, the Cascade Basin, and the others on, on developing really a sewer asset management tool. So, if you want to go to the next page there. So, again, wrote the scope of work, HR Green had responded to that, and will be performing inflow and infiltration analysis, developing existing and future flow projections, we, they have an asset condition and rating system, similar to what we have on roads for the pavement index, so we'll be assessing the condition of all of our existing infrastructure, we'll do hydraulic, and I don't know how, the difference between those two, hydraulic modeling and hydraulic?
Hydraulic.
Hydraulic, yes. And then integrating that with our GIS data, so the current GIS data that we work in with Des Moines County on, we have that all mapped, color-coded graphically, what the condition is, the metadata behind that, showing what the constraints and capacities are, and putting together kind of a 20-year CIP funding plan, based on our current sewer rates, and what our, what we deem an annual budget for maintenance and new infrastructure. So, again, the cost from HR Green was just under 400,000, our budget, again, at 400,000. And again, I think the takeaway there, it's more the title, Sewer Master Plan, a little misleading, there's a lot of work, a lot of engineering going behind this to create an asset management tool for us. So, and I think the last page is just some examples. So I think the last page is just some examples of what that'll look like on GIS, color-coding it, the hydraulic analysis, and putting together some capacity and constraints. So when we're talking to new development projects, we know what the need is. Any questions to that?
Good job.
One thing I'd mention, I don't know if you have anything, Nick, but one thing I'd mention on this is that as we're going through integrated planning with the help of Environmental Protection Agency, we'll be doing that over the course of this next year. We have, they'll be on-site August 8th and 9th. We're going to be looking at, from a... They're looking more from a stormwater perspective, but they're keeping all of this in mind in terms of what is our overall sewer system needs as well. How are we going to be able to prioritize what projects need to happen when? You know, we're under our CSO order. Typically, we end up with orders on our five-year MPDES permit for things that need to occur. We want to make sure that as they take a look from an integrated planning perspective of what should happen when, we want to be able to potentially modify our CSO order, but we also want to make sure that we keep our whole system in mind. What's going on with this sewer master plan is going to look at things such as lift stations. The interceptor, Mississippi Interceptor, is a major project that needs to occur, is an example. We have other areas where we know that we have constraints within the system. Those are capital needs that need to occur, too. We want to make sure that those are all put into one prioritization scheme. And so the sewer master plan and the integrated plan should... We're hoping to get them working enough together that they give us what we need to be able to work with the state on a more of a long-term basis for modifications to our CSO order. And what seems to be the goal here, part of it, is instead of being on a five-year MPDES permit, we might have some of those permit rules that are written for us specifically more on that 50- to 20-year timeline. It gives us a little bit longer-term planning tool. What we're going to find, I know we're going to find, is that we can't afford to do everything that needs to be done in that 20-year basis. And my concern is that we have some way that we can make sure that we are getting stuff that needs to be done for day-to-day operations, put into the, into our capital needs in, along with the CSO work that needs to be done.
I think what really did it for me was when I first got here. We had some issues at a regulator chamber, and it was just right when Silgan Manufacturing had come online, and we were trying to work through the problems on whether or not, you know, what the issue was. Was it the regulator chamber? Was it because they were putting out too much? And we didn't have the answer for it. I said, "Well, what is our, what is our capacity?" And we didn't have the answer for that. You know, what's our capacity limitations at the regulated chamber? And we don't know those answers. So I think the sewer master plan was something that, you know, if we're going to continue to grow and expand as a community, we have to have a general direction of what our limitations are, you know, what are recommended fixes to be able to handle that added. But then also, how do we deal with what we currently have? For the last, I don't know how many years, we've been working on separating our sewer system, but not a lot of attention has been paid towards fixing those sewers. You know, that's the reason why you see a lot of backups in currently separated areas. And the hope is for this sewer master plan is to take all the information that is out there for our sewer needs for the next 20 years and put them in a CIP list that will help us prioritize what our needs are and what we can afford. And so I think that it is highly essential for us to grow as a community to have this work done. You know, $400,000 to have a sewer master plan done seems like a lot of money, but it is, it's a year's worth of work for H.R. Green to go through and digest our sewer system. One of the related topics is, you know, when we were talking about the development on South 14th Street, you know, whether or not we had capacity at that lift station. You know, technically, we have capacity during dry weather flow, but the problem was, we didn't have wet weather flow. We're going to go through with flow meters as part of the plan and figure out what areas need to be fixed and try and isolate those down. And I think that that will help a lot of our issues. So I can answer any other questions on it, but I think that the sewer master plan is highly essential for us moving forward.
Sure makes sense.
Okay, do you have anything about the price?
Well, I've already done some stuff about the price, so... Without trying to cut too much on scope, tried to dial back some of it. The initial number was higher than this, but I feel fairly comfortable in what we have for scope versus what we're paying for a price.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you. Thank you.
We good? Okay. Number eight. Resolution approving lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Megan Osteen Swim Technique for use of Dankford Park Pool.
This is the lease agreement has been discussed previously, some work sessions for construction of the dome or bubble over the swimming pool for use on a year-round basis. Just a couple items can go through here, our representatives of the swim club here as well. But the lease period shall begin one day following the end of the city pool season and continue through, including April 30th of the following year. Leasee shall be permitted to operate the pool premises at their sole and exclusive cost during the lease period. They would be permitted to construct a bubble or dome over the pool, including any supporting lighting, other equipment. The bubble shall be removed by the leasee each year prior to April 30th. Leasee shall be permitted to make improvements to the poolhouse, pool, and ground, subject to prior approval by the city in order to allow for use of the pool and poolhouse during the lease period. The poolhouse is not a conditioned space currently, so there will be some needed upgrades at that facility. For use of the pool premise, the leasee shall pay the city a monthly payment of $2,500 beginning September 1st, 2018, and continue on the first of each month, including April 30th of the following year. As we had in the previous discussion, they had requested a reduced lease amount or zero lease amount for the first two years for, under Item Seven, repair and replacement of the pool deck. They're going to be doing the pool deck improvements initially before constructing the pool. That wasn't our CIP budget, and the amount $100,000 in FY '22. They're going to be covering that cost and ask for a reduction in lease amounts, but thinking that could be used as a grant match, looking at some of the requirements, it looks like it might be easier for them to pay that amount and then have a separate resolution by council paying back that amount or paying a certain amount towards the group. And maybe they can talk a little bit more about that one. So we get through a few things here. Swimming lessons, leasee would provide on a year-round basis during the lease period and non-lease period, the swimming lesson classes for the public, so they'd be responsible all year round, even during the summer for swimming lessons. During the city operation of the pool, the fees for swimming lessons shall be reasonably comparable to other local lesson fees and should be approved by city council, is how it's stated in here. Leasee shall be responsible at its sole expense for the entire cost of construction of the dome and any supporting or additional structures, and for the maintain the dome and all associated equipment at their cost. They should provide necessary staff for operation of the pool during their lease period. They are responsible for payment of all utilities during the lease period. They, under Item J in Section Nine, leasee shall receive approval from the city council before any grant application monies are utilized for pool improvements or for the dome structure and associated equipment in order to hold the city harmless for repayment of the grant monies due for failure of the leasee to satisfy the terms of the grant. That's one of the discussions about having to pay back grant funds should obligations not be met. Item K, Southeast Iowa Swim Club shall retain ownership of the dome and related equipment. City shall provide the pool in normal condition upon completion of the non-lease period after the city pool season. Any items that come up that are not budgeted that exceed $10,000 do require approval of the city council. And then some other language here, I guess, on applicable law and termination and limitation of the leasee. But that's kind of a brief summary of the lease, if you have any other questions. And, again, the swim club group is here as well to be able to answer any questions and go over their terms as well.
Council, do we have questions?
Does this address what happens since we're filtering all year round instead of just the summertime, the expenses with the filters, et cetera? Is that part of their responsibility, or is that ours as the owners?
Ours is the owners to maintain the pool, which would be filters as well. Their payment of $2,500 a month would cover, during their period, intended to cover any expenses for...
It's intended to cover that sort of thing.
Yeah, improvements to pumps, filters.
Chemicals and all that kind of stuff.
Chemicals are their cost. Utilities are their cost during their season.
We don't have, not knowing what our capital costs would be on our own, nor how would it impact the normal wear and tear, the $2,500 a month is just designed to try to be able to cover those kind of things that we know are going to be there, we just don't know how much.
Southeast Iowa Swim Club, a third party, or...
Maybe Ryan could discuss that a little bit more. Maybe the group could, might be able to better identify who the parties are with this.
So basically, Southeast Iowa Swim Club is... Yeah, we're a nonprofit. We're the local club that is kind of, we, we're part of the Y, we're part of the USA, but we're just the local swim club. So the leasee is Megan Osteen Swim Technique, Most LLC. That is the USA team out of Cedar Rapids and will be a satellite location for them. So we're, yeah, we are, we are the third party, I guess, as well.
And your role is raising the funds for the dome and securing those spots for the dome.
Basically, we're coming through and we're going to go and raise the funds for the dome. We're going to own the dome because if she were to ever pull out, we can start our own team here. The dome stays in Burlington. If we're asking Burlington to, basically, if we're going to fund it through Burlington businesses, then we're going to keep it in Burlington. She can't just take that dome and go open something somewhere else. So it'll be our dome to stay here if we close, or the city's dome. If they want it at that point and we aren't going to use it, the dome will be in Burlington.
And we're talking about a bubble type thing that's air-inflated? It's not a...
It's a smaller bubble.
Yeah, okay, that's just what I had in mind. That's what I had pictured.
Yeah, Eric, put that up on the screen.
Well, all right.
And is this going to be inside the current fence or outside, or do they have to move the fence, or...
The fence is going to be moved to the outside, just a few feet out from where it is now.
But I don't think that's a bad idea. I kind of like that. Gives you more room than in the summertime, too.
There's, there is some, and we've talked about this, but there's going to be some in order to winterize it. We're going to have to put in some shut-offs and do some different things in order to winterize the plumbing for the...
Right.
Basically, the baby pool, we're going to have to winterize that, but that is...
That's part of what we're proposing. That'd be part of the project.
Okay.
Any other questions, guys?
As far as timing of the project, you guys would operate swim lessons starting this year. Construction of the dome would not go until next year, 2019, or 2018.
We would tend to put it up in September of 2018.
And would do the deckwork this, well, potentially next spring.
As much as we can in the spring before the season, and then whatever's left, finish it up after the normal summer season. So we'd put it up September to October, at the latest, of '18.
Okay. You guys good?
I hope you're working out.
You guys are crazy, man. This is awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Number nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Start with number nine. Rewarding, a resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package, number one, general construction.
What a project. Perry and I met earlier this week, or last week, was it? Yeah, last week, after the bids were opened.
Who's Perry?
Perry Heinrich works with Carly Nelson. Very helpful, wonderful. They've been helpful. We've been meeting twice, twice a month, every two weeks usually, and talking with the architects, and Perry's been involved with that, putting these packages together and proposing that they be let out for bid, which y'all are aware of. I think it's been presented previously here. So those bids came back. There were a total of seven packages that were bid, and they did the bid opening. Major Grimshaw was there, I was not there. So that's why Perry and I met, to kind of go over some of these things. And actually, it came in, what we had originally budgeted for each one of those packages, it came in total, over all seven of them, about, I think it's probably $20,000, $25,000 less than what we had thought it was going to be overall, or the total of the seven bids. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. Overall, we're under budget.
Overall, we're under budget, and there's some, some things that, like, one of the bid packages is the site work, and it's bid package number seven that we're probably, may hold off and ask for a rebid later on, just for the fact that we're not quite sure what's going to be done with the parking structure, depending on how it goes through this process. And we have time, because that would be like the last, the last phase of the construction would be the site work outside, which is basically the parking garage outside, and trying to make that fit within the money that's been allotted for this project overall.
The chief brought it, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to go over budget, or what was allotted to us for this project, so...
Perry? Are we, we're going to end this under budget?
I definitely think so. I mean, we've got a very strong contingency. We've discussed that earlier when you're doing a remodel. You know, on a new construction, you may go with five. On a remodel, we suggest 10. But I'm excited to say, I mean, with our bid under budget, what we've monitoring through the design development discussions that I've had with the general, or the prime contractors, I had made some phone calls during the last couple of days to do interviews, but I'm confident that we've got a good project here and a good team.
Perry, I just want to tell you this, no pressure, but Burlington is counting on this.
That sounds like pressure.
Just a little bit.
All right. We believe in you, Perry. We believe in you. You guys have any other questions on this?
Good work.
Talk about pressure, you've had that on Chief and Major all along here.
Okay.
I'm excited about this, guys. When do you think we're going to start?
We did talk to the bank, and I know that they will be out August 7th, so we've kind of been working out the details of when we actually take possession. I think Perry has some contractors that have been asking the same question of when they can get in and get going. So as soon as, and the bank is confident that August 7th is the date, and then I believe that weekend, I think that's, that'll be the last day, the weekend before that is when they'll actually move and will take possession, probably August 7th, August 8th, somewhere around there, and then go.
And close.
A week from today. That's good.
Yes, hopefully.
Perry, you mentioned, or you're mentioning with the last one of these bids that you may want to rebid it. How does that work? You award it now and then you can rebid it?
Yeah, so I made the recommendation to the team that we take a look at that and rebid it. During the design phase, we cut out quite a bit on that exterior site work, because we knew we had aspects inside the building, through the estimates, we were, you know, trimming. So when this bid came in, knowing that that work's going to be done in spring, especially a lot of site contractors are just really busy. They're out working, they have to come in and do estimates. I would have liked to seen some more bid participation for that bid package. I think we probably could have came under that or on that more, close to that $60,000 budget. But now that we've come in under budget, once we go through, the first couple of months is going to be demolition, we're going to find those unknowns, we're going to have a better of idea where we stand with our contingency come December. We can possibly look at other options, like a screen wall has been brought up, ways to maybe have some controlled access to that parking area. We can relook at that and then rebid that. So we could essentially, we're going to throw out those bids and choose not to award that and then read... and then redesign and rebid it.
So your point, Jim, then, is that we should not be approving this item seven then?
If you're looking to rebid.
Yeah, and I think Chief Beard, he'll be back next week and him and I will discuss that when, when he gets back. But that would be my recommendation in between myself, Major Grimshaw, and Perry that had discussed this last week, that would be our recommendation is not to award that number seven package and award the rest and leave that number seven one to be rebid at a later date. And hopefully, we can accomplish that.
Boy, I hope you remember that, you gotta remember that.
We'll try to remind you, too.
Okay, please.
Okay, you guys good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Major, thank you, Perry.
I'm just going to read through these and then whatever, whatever else extra you've got. Number 10 is a resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package number two, floor finishes. Do we need to talk about any of, I'm just going to roll through them. Number 11 is resolution, this is all the new police department, resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package number three, the fire protection sprinklers. Mayor, why don't you redo the, who got the awards? Or who will get the awards on the agreement? Well, you don't have that in front of you. Flooring finishes was Wright Smith Flooring America, 197,452. Okay, who's fire protect, and fire protection sprinklers? Fire protection sprinklers, there were four bids, the low bid was Tri-State Automatic Sprinkler for 119,765. Number 12 was a resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package for plumbing. Low bid was Frank Miller and Company, 125,000. Frank Miller. Number 13 is resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package number five, HVAC heating and ventilation and air conditioning. Rockaway Mechanical and Roofing, 125,722. That was considerably under all the other bids. Cable and Local. Yes. Number 14, resolution awarding contract for new law enforcement center bid package number six, electrical. Morefield Electric out of Fort Madison, 721,000. And they bid the alternate of 71,400. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And then number 15 is resolution awarding contract for the new law enforcement center bid package number seven, exterior site work and parking lot renovations. And we covered that already, that's going to be a rebid, okay?
We didn't mention the cost on the bid package number one for the general...
Break it out.
...contract. That was Frank Miller, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, one million, three.
One million, three, roughly.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Are we good? Okay. Moving on to the proposed consent agenda for the seventh. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any problems there, gentlemen and lady?
No, there are too many.
Yeah.
Too many.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I just got busted up again today.
Seven pages.
Over nuisances, man. Okay, number two is resolution amending the contract for engineering services for Phase One South of the Flint River Trail.
So if you recall, when we awarded a bid on this, we were significantly under budget for this project, so we had some remaining funds, local funds and grant funds that could be utilized. Based on our requirements for doing any alternate work, we have approximately $230,000 remaining in project and grant funds allowable for construction of the trail. These grant funds would need to be utilized or potentially lost or not be able to use going forward. So we wanted to try and make use of the funds while we have them, based on securing them previously. In order to do new work on the trail, we need additional engineering services in the amount of approximately $40,000. We have 18,667 existing funds available towards that.
Could you give me that number again? Mr. T.
It's in the, in the resolution, we have, we need 40,000 for engineering services, we have 18,667 remaining from the original budgeted amount. So need approx, just over 21,000 in order to complete engineering to go out for bid and do design observation, construction. So we've identified funds through the CIP that could be utilized for that out of, primarily out of hotel motel funds. We've already come in under budget on some tractors for parks that we purchased for 6,000 and then a couple items that, estimating based on preliminary bids and quotes, coming in under golf carts and forestry bucket truck and then using trail maintenance funds to try and come up with the additional funds for engineering so that we can utilize these grant funds and not lose them. They are time sensitive and it is difficult to acquire these funds, we want to make sure we're making use of them the best we can so that we don't have, so that reduces our future requirement for the Flint River Trail. We have funding in FY '21 and FY '22 for future construction on this and hopefully that'll reduce that cost down the road as well, so.
If you haven't been out walking on the, on the new trails, you're really missing out. You're really missing some, some good exercise, you get to view the beautiful creation in the sky, it's, you gotta get out there and check it out. So if you haven't been out to the, to the trails, you're, you're really, really missing a great opportunity to have a good, good time and it's fantastic. Anything else on that? Okay. All right. Antoinette, you don't have a plug? We'll wait till the end, I know you got one. Number three is resolution authorizing the filing of an application for resource enhancement and protection reprogrammed for construction and improvements at the North Gorge Trail. Mr. T.
This is a application again for refunds that city qualifies for up to 150,000 for refunds through the program, does not require a local match. This would be a self-contained project, no other grant funds sought or anything, but looking to do additional construction and improvements at the North Gorge Trail, working with the county on this project as well. A lot of the project currently is on the city property and goes over into the county area as well, working with Des Moines County Conservation. I think there's approximately three to four miles constructed currently, looking to continue that. Their ultimate goal is to get 10 miles of trail here, which would allow races or different events to be, sanctioned events to be held at the North Gorge Trail. But this again is just an app, allows application for continued development and construction of the North Gorge Trail through the REIT funds. If awarded, we would need to enter into an agreement with Des Moines County, a maintenance agreement, since it is on city and county property. The county's not, this project doesn't fit under the county's application, I guess what they deem eligible for applications, it fits more in the city application. So we're the lead agency on the grant application, but would need some sort of maintenance agreement with the county based on the grant.
And how does this work with Americans Disability Act? How does that all fit?
How does it work with that?
Yeah.
I, no, I'll have to look into that a little bit more to get you a better answer it.
Way to go, Jim, asking tough questions and stuff.
It, it's a natural trail that, yeah, I'll have to check it.
So there's, I mean, the, the requirements are different for that sort of area than it would be.
Yeah, there's single track trails versus a multimodal trail, so.
Okay.
But I, that's something I can get a little more information for you on.
I, I guess it's an off-the-ball question there.
We'll let it slide tonight. If you haven't been out to the North Gorge, I was just out there last week with my grandson and my daughter, it's fantastic, guys are out there riding all over the place. I've got my bike, okay, I'm not going to start fibbing, I don't have my bike and I'm not going to be riding it, but it is, it's awesome. So again, just throwing a plug out there, if you have not had a chance to go out there and see this, if you're a bike rider, it's awesome, you need to get out there and do some riding, summer times, we're running out of time, so.
One note on the trail, there is some areas that are biking and hiking or walking and then there are some areas that are biking only. So from the trailhead, you can go for a hike or a walk as well as bike, but there are some sections that are designated just for bikers so that there's, as they get a little more difficult. So encourage all users out there.
Are we good? Number four is resolution amending the permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington Inc. for encroachment into city right of way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
This was previously approved for art installation on Jefferson Street. After looking at the site and some of the street trees in the area, it was going to probably require that tree to be dramatically trimmed or possibly removed. There is a lot of area on the east side of the property there at 301 Jefferson that would allow for that installation as well. So the amendment would allow the placement on the east side of the property on North Third Street right away instead of Jefferson Street right away.
So do you have a picture of the statue of Annie or are they just gonna leave it as a surprise?
Don't, I, similar to the design before, kind of the palettes, the painting palettes and, and art sculpture.
I like that he just ignores that one.
Whatever, Dwan. Are, are we good?
Yep.
Number five is resolution approving travel and training policies. Mr. Stoker.
In your packet is the actual resolution and policy. This was last updated, I think, two or three years ago. So basically, what we've changed is we removed all the wording that talked about advances for travel. We stopped doing any advances, it's all reimbursement after the travel is done. We just were finding that people were changing their travel plans, we were having to void checks. It was becoming a lot of work. So we've removed all of the advances. So that wording has changed. I updated the per diem, the meal expenses on page two of the policy with the new rates. Also, I did look up the state of Iowa mileage is still at 39 cents, which is what ours is, so I'm leaving that the same, where the federal rate is 53 and a half cents. So I went ahead and just left it as is since the state hasn't lowered theirs or increased theirs, we're in line with what the state's doing.
Thank you.
And then at the end of the policy, we added a travel checklist to try to help people fill out the forms, just give them some helpful hints, receipts, receipts, receipts.
Always.
We do per diem on the meals, which is nice, that's made accounting's life a lot easier, but hotel receipts, that type of thing we need to have, so. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Can I have an advance?
No. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Steph.
We've got some, well, you know, figured I'd corner her right away. We got some public hearings set for August 21st. Now, the first is consideration of an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Burlington, Iowa by amending the standard penalty for violation of city code. B is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Vineyard Street area drainage project. C is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Jefferson Street parking improvements. And D is consideration of sale of property locally known as 914 Louisa Streets of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Teslin, you have anything to add to that or anything? All right, first discussion item is treasurer's report.
Oh, this is good. You have issues, man.
Hi.
Hello.
The preliminary June's treasurer's report was in your packet. Note I said preliminary.
Preliminary.
This is going to change a lot over the next couple of months because we're accruing everything back, getting everything back into the right timeframe. So that'll be revenues, expenditures. But on the positive side, the two things that I know Jim kind of asked me about was the deficit accounts, if you look, you don't see those at the recplex or golf course anymore.
The deficit accounts, yeah.
And like the other...
They were those a few long ago.
Yeah, so if you're looking through, the other two that are on here is vehicle maintenance and property maintenance and those are internal service funds, so those will clear up by the time we're done with June. But again, it's, we're just starting a long process of getting to the end of June.
I have to make a comment. We promised, we said we were going to work on getting rid of these deficit accounts five-plus years ago.
Say it.
This is a big deal to me, folks, that these deficit, deficit accounts are no longer there. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph. This is a big deal.
Right, thank you, too, you were a driver on that bus.
Thank you, counsel.
That's right, that's right. Well done.
And now, it becomes incumbent upon those of us that might be here in the future to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Amen to that.
I'll second that motion.
Amen.
Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You guys good? All right. Man, that does feel good, doesn't it?
It's great.
All right. Jefferson Street improvements, Nick Mack.
Have these on the computer, maybe, do the same thing, yeah? Can switch to the computer screen. Stephanie, if we could switch to the computer here.
Well, staff met again, went over with the DPI and police and parks and forestry and everything, just to make one last look at this. It's a fairly simple set of plans, essentially moving the back of curb enough to be able to create parking spaces. If you want to go to the next, I don't really like this view. So what we're creating is, is we're creating similar parking style to what we have on the rest of Jefferson, parallel and then diagonal. If you want to hit the last slide, show what it looks like over the aerial, the current aerial. So what will happen is the planter boxes will get removed, there's some utilities underneath there that'll get taken out. It's about 22 spots. And then they will essentially pour new parking, a new curb. We will, our goal is to not try and get into the, any of the exposed ag.
So pick up, how many new parking places in?
22, I think, was the number that I had. The estimate, I think, previously that I gave you was like 56,000. The estimate on this, now that's more fine tuned, is 60 to 70. There's some hesitation on going out to bid because there's an event going on that'll be in that area fairly heavily at the end of September. That being said, is there anything about these prior to going to public hearing that you want to see changed? I think the one thing that maybe wasn't talked about in detail was in front of PDE, we're going to try and do some ballards, some concrete ballards for protection.
That's a good point.
And then we're going to, we're tackling some ADA things that probably weren't on the initial plans.
Yeah.
Some on Main and then off, over off of Third Street, so. They're fairly basic plans.
We need those spots.
So I note that there's a big push to get the parking spots and I would agree.
Also, I wanted to make sure that you had an idea of what this looked like. You gain a lot of street parking in that area, but that means that you have, you also have the loss of the park-like space in there, too. People need to understand that you've, for what you, you gain, you have to lose something in there.
And there's still the plan to try and put back, not planter boxes, but some sort of veg, and Eric maybe could attest to this better than I can, that...
I was going to ask if there was any way to...
The street trees that are in the surface level, sidewalk level parking, especially on the north side where the, the sidewalk is larger, continuing that and the...
That you'll be able to, you'll be able to keep the street trees?
Yeah, some of the trees are, will be able to be kept that are already at the sidewalk level. All the planters will come out, but the sidewalk level trees on the north side will be able to come, stay and then at some of the intersections or alley areas, there may be able to be additional trees there as well.
I'm comfortable with it.
And they'll never be as big as the trees that were previously there, I don't think that those tree, those trees were massive.
Yeah.
You'll never see something like that again, just because those are too big.
Too big.
The primary business that I can think of that loses use of the space in front of them is the bean counter for who's productively used, who's using it for outdoor seating.
They currently have some outdoor seating.
So that's going to have to be modified and you have to know that that's going to be an impact on them. We, at the same time, they're getting more...
More parking.
Parking, so hopefully they, they can see the benefit for it, but you, you need to understand that those are the kind of things that you may get some pushback.
There is more walking path available now, though, if that, because there's a fairly large planter outside of that business, that you would now create walkability through. And so there is, I don't know the dimensions to be able to comment, but there is, you could do a street cafe or sidewalk cafe is the proper term.
Unfortunately, they're, they're one of the businesses that have been in to see some of the preliminary plans, they're, they're one of the ones that have been upfront and knowing what's going on, so.
Are you going to try to save the rock in the planters or?
Our goal is to try and stay, save that limestone, it's fairly expensive rock. We could just put it back in storage behind Public Works until we find a more suitable purpose for it.
Good deal. Good job, Jim.
So the businesses in that area have been contacted and you haven't heard anything from them?
They have, we haven't contacted them yet, but we're going to try and minimize what they will see for the most part. We should be able to go in there, take out the planter boxes and then make curb cuts to, to be able to remove the area while keeping the sidewalk open and hopefully some, maybe some... the sidewalk open. And hopefully, some, maybe some functioning of hours may help that as well.
You, you also have a, I mean, this is one of the consent items that's set in a public hearing, and your, your time process there is to try to award bids by the end of August?
And then, by award, it'd be Sept-, I think it was September eleventh.
And are you firm on doing that?
I have some hesitation, just because it's getting later in the season. By the time you would start construction, you'd be probably towards the event that's down there at the end of September. You'd probably talk more early October. Now, you can do concrete work as long as, you know, isn't sub-zero for a fair, a fair amount of time. I feel like you could still get the work done, but-
Would you feel better if you had, if you changed the, I mean, even if you award contracts this fall, to have it be for spring work?
Spring project. It probably would be easier on getting things done, not trying to shove everything into the end of the year.
Yeah.
And I know that we had talked about this early on in the year, about getting it out and having it be a summertime project. But I don't think we fully realize the workload that some of these projects, like Agency Street and the Roundabout, have become. So.
Right on.
So, I mean, we could still go out to bid, see what bids we get.
You could also have a time for, I don't, I don't know what your thoughts have been because we're kind of like just talking about this. Bid it with a construction start for after, you're, you're wanting to have it be after Cannonball Run, whatever that is.
Fireball Run.
September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is the event.
After that, but have a closed date next spring, so that they could have the flexibility to do work this, this fall or next spring?
Correct. And we may try and get some, I haven't talked this out yet, but try and get some of the removal done yet this fall. So, I think it's still worth maybe going to public hearing as the plans and specs, and then being able to go out to bid.
Well, the goal was to have it ready for when the police department's ready, right?
Correct.
So, we should be okay then?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Next, we have Great Places Grant Project Identification.
We've been designated as a great place by the state of Iowa, and that program-
Because we are?
Yeah. Well, they, they recognize unique places throughout the state of Iowa that really signify what the town is about, or they, they give a unique sense of place. And with that comes the public recognition, but also the opportunity to apply for project funding every year. There are grant funds available. The average grant award is a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. There is a match requirement there. It's a one-to-one match, but we might possibly be able to use some of our riverfront funds as that match. But we have to send in a notice of intent by tomorrow saying that we're, we're looking at doing these three projects for this funding cycle. We're not committing ourselves to those three projects, but we're narrowing down our list of projects to three before we pick one final project to apply for. And all of the projects are based on the riverfront plan we put together as part of our flood mitigation project. That's what we applied for the Great Places designation with. And so, we put five projects on our, our Facebook page to, inserted a poll to ask people what they wanted to see on the riverfront in the next few years. And we had an amazing response. We had over a thousand votes, which is the most votes we've had on any poll. Our comprehensive plan had eleven-hundred votes for comparison. We had more here. So, this is far and away the most successful public engagement, at least, poll we've ever had. And the results are in. We closed the poll today. We had fifty-two percent vote for the splash pad. The amphitheater seating and event space was second, with shade structures and seating coming in third, then visitor boat docks, and I think seven or eight people voted for wayfinding signage. So, what I need from you as a statement or some direction saying, okay, let's put in a notice of intent for these three projects, and then we can decide later which one project we want to apply for funding for.
You have no official decision you can make tonight, but you can say if you're okay with letting him go ahead, and if, are you comfortable, is it going to be a showstopper for him to submit based off of the three highest scores? This is for this year's cycle, as, as he's mentioned. You have the ability, if we don't receive funding from something in this cycle, next year, you'll have the same process of being able to identify. But you're still limited based off of why we were awarded the Great Places designation.
The grant program required planning work to be done in a targeted area, and we had that planning work done for the downtown riverfront.
So, it has to be into that dark, the downtown riverfront, and it has to be one of the projects that was identified in that process.
Yes.
So, there, even though you can modify what you select for a project, there isn't a lot of wiggle room for what can be done from kind of what the list that he's put up there.
I'm for turning you loose, man. I'll see what you can do. What about you guys? Timmy?
This- I'm not, I, I don't, I don't want to see us move on it this quick this year if we can, if we can go further, because I don't think that overall, it's going to be a popular project, the riverfront improvements as a whole, and in particular, the, the splash pad. I know everybody wants one, but when it comes time to pay for it, we're putting out forty or forty-five thousand dollars a year. We've got a discussion on Memorial Auditorium later tonight that's, people are very upset that it's, we're paying three to four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax dollars to support. And I, I don't know, I'd like to have more time for people to absorb this than, than I, honestly, the first time I knew that there was a, an online vote on anything or, or recommendation or whatever was today. I think it's, I think it's a little quick, twenty-four hours to make a decision. It's just, I don't, I don't think good business.
Yeah. The poll has been up for a week, but I understand the, the quick turnaround here. And we wouldn't be, so if we put in this notice of intent, we don't have to apply for a project. But if we don't put a notice of intent in, then we're not able to apply for a project once the grant cycle opens up.
So, we limit ourselves to the three projects that we-
Right. You limit yourselves to the three that you put in the notice of intent for.
And then, at a later point, you can just say, no, we don't want to do this, so we refuse the grant? Can we do that?
Actually, you're not applying for a grant now.
Nope. This, this isn't a grant application. It's the, the first step to it, and we wouldn't have to apply for the grant. We do have the chance every year to apply for the grant.
Okay, but that wasn't my point. The point was, assuming you received the grant, at that point, we can say, no, we don't want it for one of these particular three items. Is that true?
We could do that, yes. If we received it, we could say, we are giving the money back. We don't want to go forward.
Yeah, but if we're using, if this money that we're getting is going to be used toward, toward the riverfront, stuff that we're already got planned to do. See, again, I'm not, I'm not for, I don't like everything on that list, but I could fine-tune it when it, when the time comes, because I do think we're going to need some shade structures with seating. I'm all in for that. Visitor boat docks, we're going to have to deal with that issue. So, to me, I'm, I'm like, go ahead and send in paperwork, and let's see what they send back. That's where I am. Do I, are there two other people like me?
Well, I, I like the idea of going ahead and sending, but I'm with, with Councilman Scott. I, I have never been in favor of splash pad, and I probably never will be unless somebody really-
I'm not a splash pad fan myself, but-
Comes up with some money for it, to do it.
I do like shade structures and seating, and-
When is an actual application, when's that supposed to be done?
September.
So, at that point, if you're moving forward, you would be doing an applicant, you would have a, have to be selecting which project do you want to go forward with. I understand, I understand the, the ongoing cost with the splash pad. If, it may be that you're, if you have then, over the next month and a half or so, as you're trying to figure out what project to do, if that is not what is wanted, but you've listed the three projects, if you were to do the, the shade, the seating and shade structure, that's a passive thing that you're looking at on the east side of the auditorium? Is that correct? I don't know the area.
Yeah, they've been identified on both the west and the east side in our plan.
That would be something that if you did do, it would be a passive cost that was a, was a, didn't have an ongoing type of cost. So, you could look at, if, you have some time to weigh which one you want to submit a final project for, but you are, at this point, limiting down to just three options that you could consider in September.
For this, for this pass, for this, right, right.
We'd have some time to look into the maintenance costs of splash pads versus the other options, too, in the month between when we did our notice of intent and grant application.
Are there two other people on this council that have no problem with the moving forward, at least to see if we can get some, some money on this?
Me.
First we're not?
Yep.
What are we committing to if we move in? We're not committing to any of that.
Tonight, you're not. But when, I think that you, if you get to next month and you are going to submit a grant application, if you do submit that grant application, you should be intending to try to follow through if you're awarded funds. And that might be the spot that you say, no, we don't want to submit this grant application. But that also means, Chuck, you need to get this done.
Okay.
But I know that you have more time then to do it than what you do right, right now. Because this, this is, for this first month process, they gave us an, an announcement and said, you need to tell us back in a week and a half that you are willing to do this. And you've had very limited timeframes to do stuff.
Mm-hmm. Then, a, a quick turnaround. Fortunately, it's, we're not locking ourselves to anything. If we put in our, our notice of interest, it's just the state wanted us to identify three projects that they could evaluate it for eligibility, and then we can move forward later.
I'm good. We're going, go ahead and do it.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. We're not committing to anything, really.
Thank you, Charles.
Thanks for all, thanks for all your work you've done.
What this guy said, two times, doubling down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Number five, Memorial Auditorium?
All right, I guess I get to start on this one, based off of, in your packet, you have a three-page memo for me, which is way too long to go through. But I did want to kind of go, that at budget session, this was one of the topics that came up to, to look at over the course of this year. And as, as you start thinking about what you're doing with, what you think the, the future of the auditorium is, and that first paragraph that I put in there was really about, keep in mind and keep in perspective all the events and groups that use that facility, and what it means to the community as you make a decision here. How do you impact any, potentially impact any of them that, that are part of it? With that said, you know, out of the seven items that you can do, you can continue to operate as we are with VenueWorks. We've, we're three years into a contract. It's a five-year contract, but after the third year, July one, we have the option of terminating the contract essentially at any time, as long as we give a hundred and twenty days notice. That being said, if you were to do that, you'd also, I would encourage you to be respectful about the, the events that they're looking to schedule over the course of the next year, as well as any, any other events that are being scheduled by other folks, to make sure that you don't make it, if you do something different, that you don't do something that negatively impacts the commitment that they have made.
Right.
That being said, the, the other options that you could look at, you could look at purely selling the area. Well, how, given the way that the land was granted to us from the federal government, that becomes fairly impractical, which I kind of highlighted in there. You could lease the site, whether that's leasing the building itself, or allowing some, leasing the land, allowing someone else to demo the property or use it, however they're going to, put their own structure on it on a, on a long-term basis, which would be comparable to what's done with the Big Muddy site. We own the land. We have a long-term lease arrangement with, I want to say, it's Wine Guard, but-
Standard. Standards operating.
Okay. And then, they sublease then to the operator of the restaurant. There could be something that was envisioned to do something comparable to that. Now, that runs into, that avoids the land sale issue, but it does not avoid other commitments that we've made over time. We've had the funds that were received from the state back two thousand and five to do a, a whole host of projects totaling a little four and a half million dollars, put a restriction on that land and on that facility through two thousand and twenty-six. It is, I think, twenty years from the completion of all the agreements. For us to do something that would lose property there would require the approval of the state along with it. It's hard to get approval for a what-if scenarios. Now, if you were to develop a, a scenario of what you're looking to see happen there, for example, you could be saying that we're willing to go out for development proposals where you saw the site, the existing facility disappear, but a new convention center go up in its place. You may be able to go to the state and say, this fits within what the auditorium was, was designed to do. This is a modification, a significant modification, but it doesn't eliminate what, what the original project was designed to do, and, and petition them to say that that's acceptable. They may or may not agree with that. I don't know. But, but it's hard to bring, it, we can't take something to them unless there's really an interest in seeing something brought forward to them. With that in mind, if they, they, under any scenario that changed the structure, could be saying that you owe us back a portion of the money, whether it's the four and a half million overall dollars that they provided to us, or the one million five hundred thousand that was specifically for the auditorium itself. And, and it's potential that, given that you're twelve years down, or eleven years down the road, that there might be some pro-rata share that could be discussed, too. I don't know. But again, that's, those are things that, the only reason to bring up with the state is if you were actually moving down them. What are my other options that I have in here? What is I'm doing this? Three, consideration of other entities coming in and operating the facility for the city instead of VenueWorks. An example of that, that we went through three years ago, we didn't have anyone else who submitted back then, but I think that there was at least, when we talked with Steamboat Days, the, some what-ifs that were just brought up in those discussions that were never pursued. And maybe there would be a what-if scenario such as that that could be pursued at this time. I kind of talked about four, which is redevelopment. Perform a sale of the existing facility to another entity while maintaining ownership was number two. One of the things with that, that one, as we've gone, there may be, you may have a group of nonprofits here that might have an interest of saying, we want to have the facility, we're willing to take over. I don't know that this is really that likely or not, but you may have some nonprofits who say, you know, we want to have this spot that we can have either our own group, just one group, or have several groups who say, together, we want to see this space used for us, and we're willing to take it over. I think you still run into the same limitations from the state there if it's not a true community facility. As I got, the later two, they had to do with the idea of going back to either a scenario similar to what we did before, where we were operating the facility, or operating it ourselves under a much more streamlined process. Stephanie kind of put together a, a list of the financial, or a page of the financials, what our costs, revenues and costs have been over the last several years. As you look on that sheet, you know, back in fiscal year eleven, twelve, thirteen, it was under city manage, management. Was it thirteen that was a crossover year with, with VenueWorks? So, it, it had a part of ours and part of theirs. FY eleven was the last year where we were really truly staffing that agency. We were short-staffed in some positions that came open in fiscal year twelve that we didn't fill. And then, they were open two into thirteen as we transitioned from us over to VenueWorks. So, a net cost, the last true full year of, of real net cost for us was fiscal year two thousand and eleven, where we were at three hundred and forty thousand net loss. Now, that's not showing, as you look at the revenues versus expenditures, the revenues up above are a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and the expenditures were four hundred and eleven thousand. The difference between those is not to three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but what I backed out of the revenues there, property taxes. Those are property taxes that we collected specifically to do the auditorium. So, they're- So they're not revenue generated by the auditorium, they're, they, we could be collecting instead of property taxes there, or we could be collecting property tax, the same property tax amount to support other city operations. So that includes the, not just the general property taxes, but the delinquents, the utility replacement tax, and then in later years, the replacement backfill are all this, all into that formula.
That's why.
That's why your, your actual revenues that are generated by the facility, for example, in, in 2011 were 72,000 dollars and that's what was subtracted off of the 411,000 a cost. Those are done in all years. And you can look, as we switch from our first, our last full year of operating it ourselves in 2011, that you had full staffing with a net loss of 340. The first year under VenueWorks, actually, that's the first full year, I'm given, was given the wrong year on that, wasn't I Stephanie? The first full year would have been 14. Their cost was 340,000 net loss. The next year is 424,000 and I think that a big part of that was the elevator. That was 14, so big, yeah, that was 116,000.
116,000, yeah.
So the net, the net loss there, 460,000, where it was significantly higher was, I love having the, not being able to do this well. So the, the net loss that year, if you were to back out the elevator, would have been more in the 350 range. 340 in 15, 420 last year, 404 for, for the year that we just ended. So our costs have gone, essentially have gone up with VenueWorks running it. And part of that has to do, we, you've lost revenues in the rentals. You're not having the same usage by weddings and other types of events like that. We have had a few more events that have occurred there, which was really kind of what the goal was, was to have more events when we entered the contract. Now, this is, we definitely have not seen the amount of events increase that we had hoped to see. For this next year, the original budget that we had with VenueWorks is for a net loss for this coming year of 360,000. They haven't hit their budget in any of the years that they've been operating. They've consistently underperformed on revenues. And I would anticipate that that would be the case as we move into this next year too, is. But the two options for us to run it, which Nick will kind of go over pros and cons on, you can see net cost for us to staff pretty much on a full, fully staffed basis. Has a net loss of 395,000. More of a minimal staffing would have a net loss of 110,000 and he can kind of talk about what those two options are. Now, as we say, the net loss for the city to run it, at that 395,000, we're, we're looking at three full-time staff and we just put in numbers that were based off of all three having family health insurance. The difference between family and single is.
Astronomical.
Over 10,000 a year. So if you had, for example, three single policies that were actually there, the net loss would be 35,000 lower. But we wanted to make sure that we had it, we're showing it. Yeah.
I just want to say this real quick, I'm, this is nothing against VenueWorks or any of that. I'm, I was ready to, I was ready to start Take It Back last year. I'm ready to see Burlington Take It Back. And to me, the auditorium obviously isn't about making a ton of money, but I'll tell you what, I liked the way it ran a whole lot better and I think we took better care of our locals and our local groups when, when Burlington was running that. And that's, that's what I'd like to see, less headaches with, with the normal programs that we've got. And I, I just, I'm ready to cut ties with VenueWorks, I gotta, I'll be right back, but I'm just, I just want to throw that out there.
And as Nick goes to talk about these other two options, VenueWorks is willing to have a discussion about modifying how their contract is done as well in this process. And I think you can at least give some level of overview of that.
Switch over to the computer here. So as Jim said, I took a look at, if you want to go to the next page for me, took a, looked at two options, kind of the city, the city run full staff and then the very minimal, minimally run. So the city operated, where we would hire three full-time. One would be the booking rental position, the other two would be laborer, one a laborer two, one a laborer one. The laborer two would act function as a lead. This function would, would run similar to, to the way we do now, other than the fact that we don't, wouldn't have anybody going out and getting the, the big time shows, the, kind of the ones that have always been there. But the added role would be running the port of Burlington and the depot as far as function. Some of the benefits on that, it would shift some of our, our port reservation duties. Currently, my port reservations are done in Public Works and so that would free up a fair amount of time from some of my staff. It would have a reduction in some of the outside cleaning at the depot. I don't think we fully realize what the costs are of cleaning that place, especially as it goes through a winter time with that much square footage of flooring. We've had 4,000 square foot of, of maintenance. Currently, we have Hope Haven clean the bathrooms and what was the former lobby area, but we haven't, I don't think we fully realize what those costs are. And I think some staff in, in the auditorium could help swing over and take a look and, and reduce some of the cleaning costs. It could also eliminate some of the property maintenance hours at the auditorium port and the depot and then some reduction in time during Steamboat Days for property maintenance. And then also eliminate some of the cleaning services during Steamboat Days. Currently, we hire that out while Steamboat Days is, or sorry, when VenueWorks is out of the building and Steamboat Days has it, we, we hire that out and go clean in. If you'd hit the next one. The second role or the second function that I looked at was more of a caretaker role, where we wouldn't hire any additional staff. It was more of a function of property maintenance to go in and do the occasional check on the building to make sure that everything is okay. I wouldn't say that this is shuttering necessarily, I, I would say that this is more very minimal, minimally run building. I don't think that it was a wise decision to completely shutter it if, and if you do, that the, the cost in bringing it back online would be very expensive. So this is a, and Stephanie put a budget together on, on, it's still going to be 120,000 a year to operate that facility for utility costs. We would drop down the, the heat in the winter and cooling in the summer.
At the same time, we're making some guesses as to what we can do here. As you start thinking about all the different events that do go on or groups that are using it, you can't, we still have to bring the heat on, back up and, and down, air conditioning has to be brought up and down.
Correct, and that fluctuation is costly versus just keeping it at the same consistent temperature. So some of the things that you, you see as a reduction are utilities, janitorial, cleaning and, and the, some of the minor equipment that's necessary for the facility. It, it puts a little bit of a strain on property maintenance, more so than what it currently does. Should they have a major need in the, if they have a major need in the building, property maintenance is called, but VenueWorks is the first to respond to an issue. So that, I think that's the last slide I had. So those are the two city options that I ran through as far as a staffing level. I guess I don't know what else to talk about, I'll let that go back to Jim.
Nick, Nick.
Go ahead.
How, how much impact do you think the rentals are because of the restrictions we have down there about what can be brought in and not?
Yeah, Brandon and I have had that conversation because VenueWorks run that, runs that. Does the rentals for weddings and other events dip down? I would say that they have, I mean, it's, it's fairly obvious that it's not used as much anymore for rental purposes. Now, the question would be, if we were to return to city hands, could you see that increase? And I say that you probably would or could, but to the extent that it was prior to, I don't know that you could say that. I mean, there's more venues that are online now.
One of the things that we brought up or that your staff brought up, was it Barn on the Ridge? Is that the right name?
Yes.
That's a new venue that is on the market. Now, that might not be exactly the same market that, as, as we are, but it is a new facility that takes 40, 40 weddings, I don't know, assume in that neighborhood a year. And it shifts all other weddings around too. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that they've gone from the auditorium out there, but as you have markets switch around, people are going to be looking at, have more options that are available to them. And our pricing structure, we had, we did the increase to it. Just prior, back in 2012, when we were going through right sizing of the budget, we did a significant increase to rentals there.
I understand that, I'm just speaking from experience, looking for a place to hold an event. The price wasn't an issue for me, but what you could and couldn't, could not bring in.
I think there's parameters on catering.
That, that was an issue.
Yeah, and we would take those off. Now, one of the changes that we wouldn't change, as we went through the process of, of doing a contract and looking at language that was within it and realizing what we were doing or allowing to have happen in the, in the, our facilities, we realized that we were exposing ourselves to some significant liability with having, allowing folks to bring in alcohol that wasn't done through a proper process. So that, that was not to do with VenueWorks, it was just at the same time.
That's not a good thing, I agree with that.
And that's a function that would have to be a conversation if it were to be city staffed, would be, would be the operation of a liquor license and would that be done through the city ourselves or finding another entity to, to share that responsibility with?
Previously, you know, Steamboat Days had done the, all the liquor provisions. This is a little bit harder, I mean, we've, we've run into this with the port building. There isn't a significant amount of profit for them in, in operating for a very small group to have alcohol at their event, but we have to do that. Somehow we have to have somebody with a license who's, who's providing it.
Did I read this correctly though? Anticipated 2018, count 519, 706,000 dollars. That's if we don't make a change, is that right?
Yes.
Under expenses.
Yeah, and.
That number seems off though.
Personnels, professional services. Their overall cost at 919,000, they haven't been up that high, but I think as Stephanie's done this, I, I, you're making, you're making some estimates off of their budget. And trying to make sure that we had enough. But we haven't hit that in the past.
Right. You can see the revenues are higher than what they hit in the past too.
Yeah.
That's something Nick didn't talk about, was it maybe an adjustment in professional fees with VenueWorks? Did, did you talk about that?
Nick, this last week, you had a conversation with VenueWorks, would you kind of?
I had a conversation with Steve, forgive his last, forget his last name, the president of VenueWorks. And he saw it was on the agenda and was concerned and I told him exactly the reason why we were having these conversations, because we were having the budget conversations. And I kind of explained to him some of the options that we were going to lay out. And he did mention that he would be interested in taking a contract and maybe scaling it down from where they're at and trying to go in after some of the big shows and do more of a kind of a minimally run auditorium. I don't know what that means as far as money, that would be something we'd have to take, take back to Steve. If that's something you would want to look into.
Not me.
Well, if we're going to do a minimally run, I just assume we did it ourselves, really. Pay somebody else to minimally run it.
Well, I don't like that idea at all anyway, the minimal, it doesn't, it's not going to be efficient, it's not going to be good for the community, for it to be minimally run at all, whether it's us or somebody else.
It's a big deal to the community. A lot of people depend on the auditorium, a lot of groups depend on the auditorium, a lot of vents, a lot of venues. Yeah, again, I would just, yeah, I already said what I had to say before I, before I slipped out.
I really think our city minimum, minimally run expenditures are too low, just looking at it. I, I think that we discover it was hard to have our expenditures be that low, because you're going to have, if you were to go into that scenario, you're still going to have groups who are pushing to get use on it and it, I, I, it's, it'll be difficult to get it shuttered to where you only have 10,000 or 12,000 of our personnel costs going into it and property maintenance costs at the level that is shown in there.
That doesn't seem like much.
So I, I don't think we'll see that much of a savings, but it will still be a sign, would still be a significant savings, but limited service too.
But it would accommodate your Snow Bowl and your civic music and those things would not ever go away, it's just that.
Maybe we'd open up more doors too, back to the, a little bit more, the renting purposes too that we use it for, but.
You would lose, that does not get you the, some of the side benefits. There are some cost savings with some of the side benefits that, that Nick presented in the, just taking a city-run facility. We would, we would be saving money on ServiceMaster has been doing the cleaning. Some of the billable hours of property maintenance puts into Steamboat Days. Some of their, the, the costs that they have running the depot, running the port are reflected in here, would be, would be reduced in other areas and we don't have a good hard and fast number for what that would be. But 20 to 30,000 anyway, I think would be a, probably a reasonable number overall. And the, the flexibility it gives to his property maintenance and to your staff out at Public Works would be truly appreciated from them. It's not necessarily a cost savings, but it, as much as it is, some flexibility savings for other things.
Yeah, I'd only, I'd only be comfortable with, you know, continuing to make sure that it runs, whether it's through another service or whether we decide to take it back, but we're going to do it right and do it full-time. I, that's the only, those are the only two options that I think are, we really have.
It's a good point, but what I'm looking at is, so the fire department gets a safer grand and it's going to cost us, what, 80 some thousand the first year?
That's a budgeted amount for the first year, because we have the one staff position, but.
Right, right.
The point being, by the time you get to the fourth year and you have six positions that you're now funding.
Right. And so where, where's that money going to come from? So I'm, I'm looking for ways, 100,000 here, 100,000 there, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, I agree completely, but we, running it at a minimum, that's the 12,000, that's not, that'll end up going up.
Yeah.
Because of unforeseen, overtime, I mean, that's gonna, that's definitely not a realistic minimum.
But then you'd hope to make that up and increase revenues.
But I don't think whether it's, when it's run at a minimum, there are not going to be increased revenues, because it's not going to be run very well. It's not going to be a service people are going to be out to look for. That's just what, I mean, we'll have, hopefully we'll be able to keep, you know, the, the ones that always use it, whether it's the Snow Bowl or civic music, but if it's not a facility that they can use, they're not going to, they will find other ways.
It won't be designed to be there for a meeting space for things that come up during the course of the year. It'll be designed to more, weigh more for the things that are the major users of it, that have been there for.
My conversation with a lot of the groups and people that have used the auditorium in the past and want to continue to use it, they feel a lot better with it going back to the city's hands and, and moving away from VenueWorks, that's, that's what I got.
At what level?
At what level of running it? I, I think that's, I think we can get some debate in that, but I think we can find a happy medium where everybody's, everybody's happy.
How do we define the difference between the city minimum proposal versus the way we used to do it?
Well, the way we used to do it was really the first example there, where you have three full-time staff. And they are housed down there and available. That minimum is. That minimum is more of, you have property maintenance who's overseeing it, similar to how the, the port is being done now, where they're probably going to be hiring part-time staff, which is the, what we do down at the port to do some tear, set up and tear down along with property maintenance. So as property maintenance, the regular people there are doing the setup and tear down, their time is allocated to that, and you see that in their property maintenance charges, but they'll hire, if you hire some part-time help to assist with those duties, their salaries would be up there in that 12,000 number above. I think that probably, those, those are the two areas that I think are probably a little under-budgeted here.
Under-budgeted.
Just, and, and that just being the nature of, how do you get yourself to forcibly get down to, we're only going to do these 10 identified things?
Right.
If you can get down to the, the 10 identified things, or whatever that list is of what we're going to allow there and no one else uses it, I think you can run it the way that that's shown there. I just don't think you're going to be there. I think it's going to be somewhere, if you go to a minimum staffing, it's going to be somewhere between there and the full staffing level.
But if we're in a full-time city, then that lead person becomes really a crucial position. You've got to find the right person for that.
I think we need to find some good working hands, like the halfway house, that need something to do. So I think, stack up chairs. I'll talk to you about that later. You know, there's a community that's doing that. They're about to lose a venue, and they utilize, they went back to community service to, instead of for-staffing for events. It's working.
We've done it in some spots, sometimes successfully and sometimes not. Yeah, we've had, had things where we've had that, that...